Welcome. This is the July 16th meeting of the Wallingford Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to start the meeting by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight's decision will be published in the Record Journal on Friday, July 20, 2018. The effective date of your variance will be Friday, July 20, 2018. The date a certified copy is recorded on the land records. The statutory 15-day appeal period will expire on Sunday, August 5, 2018. If you commence operations and/or construction during the appeal period, you do so at your own risk. Just for anybody here for application 18-017, variance request from Harvest Park Associates, it has been continued to next month. So first application is 18-012, a use variance request from 570 Center Street LLC for expansion alteration of existing non-conforming service station convenience store use where only residential use is permitted at 570 Center Street.
Mr. Chairman, we have staff notes?
Yes, go ahead.
Applicant seeks to reconfigure interior of building converting plus or minus 180 square feet of office storage space to retail space, therefore expanding the non-conforming retail use. Property is currently zoned R6 residential, but has legally non-conforming use of retail gas station with current interior configuration. Zoning Regulation 6.13.A.2 states that "a non-conforming use of land or buildings shall not be enlarged, extended, or altered except where the result of such change is to reduce or eliminate the nonconformity." Converting storage space to additional retail space enlarges, alters the existing nonconformity. Applicant has expanded parking area to the rear of the parcel. Parking expansion requires site plan modification and wetlands permit. This office cannot identify a hardship necessitating a use variance to expand this nonconforming use and therefore cannot support granting approval. Should the ZBA approve such a variance, the office suggests a condition of approval be to submit site plan to PCC in order to achieve full compliance. And we also have correspondence dated Friday, May 11 from the Inland Wetlands Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Secretary. Before I go any further, voting tonight will be Mr. Parisi, Mr. Shewinski, Mrs. Tata, Mr. Rice, and myself. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state here name for the record, name and address for the record.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Joan Malloy. I'm an attorney with the firm of Lockton Fitzgerald. My office is located at 150 South Main Street here in Wallingford, Connecticut, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant and property owner 570 Center Street LLC. The subject property is located on Center Street adjacent to what seems to be the never-ending Wharton Brook Bridge project. The original building on this property was constructed in 1933 according to the assessor's office. As noted in Ms. Torrey's comments, the property is located in a residential zone but has been used as a service station with a retail component since prior to the adoption of zoning. The applicant acquired the property, I want to say, a little over a year ago and has commenced renovations to the building. My clients did reach out and speak with the town planner during this process. They were advised that the Planning and Zoning Commission was considering taking some action to possibly change the zoning in this area because there are several nonconforming businesses in this residential zone. My client wanted to begin their needed renovations and they would have preferred to do them all at once, so they discussed using the actual fixtures in the store to limit the retail area until the Planning and Zoning Commission had the opportunity to consider the possible new zoning regulations or zoning district. The applicant is not seeking to use the repair facility for retail use at this time. They have reconfigured the front portion of the building and are asking for permission to use the former office area for retail sale display purposes. As shown on the sketch included with the application, this area measures approximately 8 by 13 or 104 square feet. Now, I do have some pictures that shows the interior that in case you haven't had an opportunity to go into it, the last picture is the one that shows the back of the actual fixtures that we're talking about that are defining the retail space currently. So we want you to understand that even though they've renovated a larger area, they are only using a portion and hopefully these photographs will help illustrate that.
Thank you.
Many of the customers who frequent the facility are the elderly residents at the Silver Pond Apartment Complex and the residents of other nearby apartments and condominium complexes in the area. I think it's important to remember that the office that serviced the motor vehicle service station was also a nonconforming use and typically involves sales and service associated with the motor vehicle repairs. We are not creating a new nonconforming area but changing what retail nonconforming use is occurring within the former office space. A use variance is allowed if the use is not prohibited in the municipality, if it is consistent with the comprehensive plan for the town, and is showing that the strict adherence to the zoning ordinance causes a hardship unnecessary for carrying out the general purpose of the zoning plan. Well, clearly retail sales is a permitted use in the town of Wallingford. There are multiple commercial uses in the area around this property, namely the Wallingford Grange, Vinnie's Daily, and the small businesses that share his building, a Damo's Garage, a hair salon, a surveyor's office, and Brunetti's Luncheonette. So again, I think it is consistent with what is occurring in the immediate area. Allowing this minor conversion of a nonconforming office space to a nonconforming retail area is not inconsistent with this immediate neighborhood or, I believe, the general purposes of the zoning plan. As noted in Ms. Torrey's comments, the, some of the improvements to the rear of the building may require a wetlands permit and will definitely require a review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. We wanted to come and get this portion of our procedure done first as it's not untypical to go to ZBA first and then we'll proceed to the other land use agencies. And should you seek to act favorably on the application and wish to condition it on us getting any required approvals from the Wetlands Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission, obviously that would not be objectionable because that is the intent of the property owner and the operator of the facility. That's my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Joan, one problem I have with this is that, we're seeing this more and more here, is that somebody comes in, buys a property, as such with this one, wants to change the use, goes to the planning office, talks to them, they advise that you need to change the zoning, and instead of doing the heavy lifting of changing the zoning, you take the shortcut and come here. And, and so my problem is, is that realistically, that's what needs to be done. And, and I realize your client is gonna have to do the heavy lifting probably for everybody in that neighborhood, but you are changing the use, they are new owners, and, you know, realizing when they bought it that this is what was gonna have to be done.
I'm not unappreciative of that position, but again, and I had talked to Casey about this. The Planning and Zoning Commission is, is thinking about looking at the regulation or the zoning for this area. There's a, I think what's called a neighborhood business district, but they have been tied up with, they made some changes to their downtown regulations or the transit district, so they've been focused on a lot of other things. So Casey said it's on the to-do list, if I can put it that way. So I think my clients thought, well, since they are going to be doing this anyway, I can wait and see if they do it. If they don't do it, it may be necessary for the client to do it. But I think based on the conversation, and again, I confirm this with Casey, that's something the Planning and Zoning is talking about doing in the relatively near future. I don't think it was a deliberate intent to avoid the harder choice. It was a recognition, okay, let me make my improvements, let me try and restrict what I'm doing, see whether I, see whether the commission will do anything, and if they do, can I get the benefit of that? So, and yes, to some extent, gas stations operate differently now. They don't rely on repairs and gasoline sales. They rely on gasoline sales and the small, lack of a better term, mini-marts that are part of, because that's what the customers are looking for. So I don't think it's a change of use, it's a modification in terms of we've given up the repair, we're not asking to use the repair area, we're just simply trying to use the area that was used for the sales and service of customers who utilize the gas station. So it's a little tweak, but one that requires some level of approval.
The repairs haven't been done there for probably 30, 40 years.
I'm not disputing that. As long as I can remember, it hasn't been there.
Yeah. Amy, could you give us a roundabout history of this property from the planning's offices' point of view? So everybody's kinda got an idea of what?
Attorney Malloy was absolutely correct. There was discussions of changing the zone, which the applicant can petition for now as well. And it gets sort of sidelined with, with the intense work that went into the downtown zone. So there was a timing issue, but it has not gone away and the applicant can certainly and should pursue that. In the past, there have been several, prior to this applicant purchasing or leasing this facility, there were others interested in carrying on that gas station retail space as well, and we're all advised that no changes could be made there. It's a nonconforming use, any alteration intensifies it and it needs to be brought into conformity once that is done. It's our position, especially in a residential zone, which this is currently, that you're intensifying any use or altering this nonconforming use is absolutely not what the fabric of the zone was created for and the regulation. And another aside, we have since come to find out via the wetlands, the environmental planner, that the parking area was in fact expanded prior to modifying any site plan or anything. So again, we're looking after the fact, which is of a concern.
Thank you.
You want me to respond?
Go ahead. No, I'll give you the time.
Again, I don't disagree with Ms. Torrey that this is a residential zone, and when you think of a traditional residential zone, you don't want nonconforming businesses to expand. But we have to look at this portion of this residential zone. This is not your typical, single-family residences are on this particular area. There are some multifamily structures very close to this, on the other side of the bridge, across the street, and then as I mentioned, the Silver Pond. But again, there are other multiple commercial facilities also concentrated in this area. So it's not your typical residential area. It truly is probably in this area 50/50 in terms of the dedication of the use of the property. I'm not saying square footage, I'm not saying numbers, I'm just saying if, I think if you took, you know, 20 properties in this area, about half of them have been dedicated to some kind of commercial use. So I think it's a little bit different than the typical residential zone scenario. And I do acknowledge, and I, you know, I was contacted, my client had what he thought was an area that was muddy, so we put down some gravel. Well, you know, we all, I know, you can't just put down gravel without finding out whether or not it has a consequence in terms of requiring permitting. They are aware of it, they are working with their engineer to get the necessary plan so that they can address it. It wasn't a deliberate attempt to ignore the rules, it was just not an understanding that you gotta do these things. I make a lot of my time dealing with those kinds of problems. They're not the only ones who do that, so.
Is anybody, you all set, Joan?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Has anybody got any questions? Christina?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question for staff. How, if, if an applicant is to petition for a zone change, how long would that typically take? Is it, is it similar to our meetings where at the next month it would be on their agenda? Or does it take longer?
It's a bit longer of a process, and I can't answer that, what, how long from start to finish, but that is, that's the proper avenue to go.
I can tell you it would take a considerable period of time because if you want to apply for a zone change, you have to get a map prepared that shows your particular property plus all property owners within 500 feet of the property that you want. And you have to put together a list of every property owner. So anywhere you have a condominium, every single person who owns in that condominium would have to be added to that list. So then you submit your application, they have to schedule a public hearing, you have to send notices to all those property owners of the, you know, the requested zone change. And then you have at least one hearing, potentially more, and I agree with Amy, nobody can predict whether it's gonna be one night or multiple nights. So yes, it's, it's a little bit of a time-consuming process just to get in the door because of the requirements that you have to meet. And then the question is, do you even have to create the zone? So you have to look and see, I mean, I think the Planning and Zoning Commission was thinking of using the Neighborhood Business District, which exists on paper but doesn't exist anywhere in town. There's no area actually zoned that, and I think they were thinking about what that is. So sometimes you have to write the regulation and then do the zone change. So it can be a time-consuming process.
And Planning and Zoning, are they under any rule to, to, for example, put it on their agenda within a certain amount of time? Or is it at their discretion when that would?
It can be petitioned by an applicant and to initiate the process.
Okay.
They're, if they're gonna wait for Planning and Zoning, I can't answer that. It is a cumbersome process, but again, we have, we have, when we speak of nonconforming uses, this is a residential zone that now, today, since the inception of zoning, allows single-family dwellings. Those businesses that are there in that little concentrated section of Center Street predate zoning. So they were allowed to remain, so, but that doesn't mean we get to have more. And that's really the foundation of this, change the zone. Because no, there is no permitted use but single-family dwellings right now in that zone today. So keep what you have, change the zone, but there's the foundation for no alteration, no changing, no intensifying, a nonconforming use.
My only other question is, it doesn't look like it from the sketches, but is, is the building footprint changing? Is there's no addition, there's no?
No, there's no addition. It's just the interior space, they just have reconfigured it, and what they want to do is use the office area and, and to, to use for their display purposes. So I understand Ms. Torrey's view, this is an expansion of a nonconforming use. Again, my argument is we're taking the area, the public area and the office area that was used to provide service and sales to customers and just changing it to a different nonconforming use, not going any further back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody else have any questions? Mr. Rice?
Just, Amy, this business started selling sundries prior to these new owners who purchased it, correct?
From what I, from what I understand, there was a retail component prior, but by intensifying office and storage space certainly is a less intensive use, so when we're changing it to more of the retail use.
It was never approved retail use, correct?
It was grandfathered in, if you will, that was a nonconforming use in the area. But again, we don't get more of it. So by converting the office and storage space, you're actually taking some unused commercial space, if you will, and converting it to commercial space, even though it's on the interior. It's expanding that component of it. If that answered the question.
I do like the idea of Planning and Zoning coming up with new regulations for the area, and I would like to see them wait until that happens. I'm not particularly fond of allowing any expansion at this point. That's it.
Mr. Shewinski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just, so I understand correctly, so previously it was used in a nonconforming way and now we're basically switching the nonconforming way in which it's being used? That's the premise?
Yes.
Okay.
Amy, I just have, just to get something clear, so if we approve it, he gets to enlarge. If we don't approve it, he still can open, still can sell gasoline, and still, he had lottery tickets in there and maybe a soda machine or an ice machine outside, that can all still sell. So we're not keeping him from opening and getting business in there, correct?
That's correct.
So he could just?
Operate as is, the nonconforming use that was grandfathered in, if he's operating with that, that he may continue to do so. It's the expansion or the alteration or the intensifying that is in question.
That was just a clarification so everybody kinda had an idea. Joan, do you have anything?
No, I, it sounds to me like the board understands that I'm saying it was nonconforming, it's still nonconforming, we're not using the whole building, we're just asking permission to use a portion of the interior of the building to allow, I think as Mr. Rice said, this has had a retail component of it. I mean, if you look up the old things in the 1950s, it was a super-service station because it did more than just motor vehicle repairs and those types of things. So again, I, I'm, we are requesting that you allow this to operate in this limited capacity. And then if in fact the Planning and Zoning Commission does do something, then he can proceed to expand further by going back to PNC and getting the necessary approvals, so.
Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against this application? You're all set, Joan? I'm gonna close the public hearing and open it up for discussion and possible action by the board. I'm just gonna make a statement. I keep on seeing this coming in front of us like I stated to Joan at the beginning. I really think this applicant needs to go to Planning and Zoning, get the zoning changed, get a site plan approval, go to Inland Wetlands, get that approval, and that's where it needs to be. I, like I said, I see this coming more and more in front of us, and to me, it's just a shortcut. People are looking for the shortcut, not having to do the heavy lifting, so. Has anybody else got anything to say or want to make a motion? Ms. Tata?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I certainly appreciate your opinion, and I, I know we've seen other, other applications that have done that. I'm looking at this one a little bit differently just because I think that the repair, which was originally in that area, was retail, that was a retail sale if you're doing repairs, and selling merchandise is also retail sale. So I don't see that this is really much of a change at all. So that's just my opinion on that. Thank you.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Okay, I should know better. My concern is that, and I've had this expressed to me by others, and before I came to this commission, it was my feeling too that there seems to be a lot of variances given to businesses, which is maybe a credit to the law profession, I don't know. But I personally agree with your statement. I think it's, should be tightened up a little bit, and I'm not familiar enough with the premise that we work on, but I'm sure that there are tools for us to do that. This business, when it was selling, counselor, was selling fish and fish supplies and hooks and, you know, flies for fly fishing. I used to trade there years ago, so. They did not have a retail per se, sales operation, okay? Closest they came to was, I think, selling tires, which goes with the station. So anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you.
I remember too, Joe's super-service.
Yeah, but you were in a carriage when you were there.
Yeah, pretty close to it. Is anybody else, or anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we deny 18-012.
Second, second?
Motion to deny the application, Mr. Parisi?
Uh, yeah, yes to deny.
Mr. Shewinski?
No.
Ms. Tata?
No.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Chairman Rusak?
Yes, to deny. Can we get a motion on the other end? Make a motion to approve so we'll do it without prejudice?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve application 18-012, existing service station with mini-mart to proposed nonconforming use service station with mini-mart.
Second?
Motion to approve, Mr. Parisi?
Uh, yes, to approve.
Okay, Mr. Shewinski?
Yes.
Ms. Tata?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
No.
Chairman Rusak?
No. Your application's been denied without prejudice.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next up is 18-014, variance request from Browning for side yard setback of 5.5 feet to construct a detached garage at 714 Center Street. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, we have staff notes. Applicant requests side yard setback of 5.5 feet where 12 feet is required to construct a detached garage at 714 Center Street in an R11 district. Parcel is a through lot with two front yards, two side yards, and no rear yard. In order to be permitted a five-foot side and rear setback for a detached garage, the garage must be located in the rear yard of the parcel. This parcel has no rear yard and therefore must be compliant with all setbacks. And I believe we also have correspondence dated June 26, 2018 from David Brandy. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state here, name and address for the record.
Marvin Browning, 68 Church Street, Hammond, Connecticut. I'm here on behalf of Jody Vera, the owner of the property. To erect a two-car garage, and we're, like she said, it's, they're asking for a 12-foot side yard requirement, and I, I need to have 5.5 because there's no rear yard, just two through lots.
Okay, so you're saying that on this application, because of where it's located on Center Street, and then you have Constitution Street, it's saying they have two side yards?
Yes.
And they're requesting 5.5 where 12 is required? And they're requesting 5.5 where 12 is required?
Yes.
Has anybody got any questions? Mr. Rice.
Uh, I believe this, there I go, shutting it off again, anyway. This project's already been started, correct?
Yes.
Because I drove by there and I noticed a framing up. I called our office, and our office indicated me that the building department had made a mistake, is that correct?
That's correct, there is all permits, building permits were pulled for the job, and it came to our office's attention that this perhaps was being located in the wrong place, and after review of those building permits, it should not have been allowed to commence, so it was stopped pretty quick, and thus, Mr. Browning represented, sending the property owner is here to, but everything else is compliant, the height, the sizing, it's, it's, was mistakenly believed to be a rear yard, in which case, one would be able to avail themselves of a five-foot side and rear setback. It's not, because it's a through lot.
Well, I have no more questions for the applicant, other than the fact that I just wanna indicate to them what I saw looked good, and I have no problem with this application whatsoever.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Anybody else got any questions? Do you have anything further to add?
No, I'm off, that was it, pretty quick.
Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody? Okay, is there anybody here to speak against this application? Go up to the microphone, please. No, over there, right over there at that, the microphone over there. And please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Carmeline Brandy, and this-
Could you come closer to the microphone so we could hear you?
Carmeline Brandy, and I reside at 704 Center Street. This is my father, and my brother Dave owns the property, as stated. So I'm here to represent my brother David. We are asking for a denial of this application. The applicant has not demonstrated any hardship for the variance sought. The applicant has sufficient other options for the location of the garage, as the property has a large rear lot that also has a frontage on Constitution Avenue. We are asking that you deny the application for the variance to decrease the minimum side yard and building setback to property line requirements as requested. The decrease would cause irreparable damage to my property value, as well as magnifying the continuing, ongoing damage to my property due to the previous modifications of the driveway and slope of the embankment between the properties. Prior to the property being bought by a builder who remodeled and flipped the house five years ago, there was significant green space, hedges, trees, shrubs, and grass between the properties. Substantial permanent damage changes made on the property have caused ongoing damage to our property. I notified the builder, the current owner, as well as the town of Wallingford, to the illegal dumping and construction debris on my property, as well as illegal diversion of stormwater drains and debris runoff. The silt detention fencing has been falling down for years due to the debris from the new topographical changes. There was also a threefold increase in the size of the construction of the asphalt driveway. Sorry, I'm nervous.
That's okay, take your time.
It has altered the previous natural flow of the stormwater runoff and sediment, causing continuing deterioration of the area and debris being deposited on my property. The applicant has never acted in good faith in regard to his property. When I brought the situation to their attention, they were dismissive and unwilling to help mitigate the situation. I was told it wasn't their problem. Meanwhile, I'm left to deal with the damage and debris left deposited on my property. So I don't see any reason to continue in its current configuration and location in violation of the Wallingford zoning laws, and this request should not be granted. I ask that you deny the variance in order that its current partial construction be promptly taken down and disposed of properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak against this application? I just got a question about the water runoff. Have you made a, what you're gonna do for water runoff of the garage?
The geography there of the lot was already as it was when I started there at the property, so I don't, I didn't, it's always like a embankment, it was there, it's already from the beginning of the street all the way up, and then off on Constitution over there, so there's gonna be gutters on the garage, it's not-
You are putting gutters?
Yeah, we gotta have gutters in the garage, but I, the garage going up has no damage effect to her property over there.
How about the silt fence? Have you made a attempt at straightening that out?
Uh, no, I didn't see any silt fence that was torn down or anything, I didn't, I didn't see that. I'll take a look at it again, but I didn't see any silt fence damage or anything over there. It's pretty flat in the back, that's why I didn't, you know, for it to be damaging that property, I don't see where it is.
Do you have anything further, Ted? Because I'm gonna close the public hearing and open it up for possible action and discussion by the board. Mrs. Tata.
Thank you.
Um, I just have a question for staff. In your notes, it says this parcel has no rear yard and therefore must be compliant with all setbacks. So I'm kinda looking at this as if because it's, there's two, it has streets on either side, there's no rear yard, correct?
Yeah, thank you.
So, because there's streets on either sides, it's a through lot, there's no rear yard, so does that have an effect on where the garage can be located?
The garage could be located under various conditions anywhere, but yes, that makes it a through lot, if the lot would have two front yards and two side yards, it does not have a rear yard. In order to build a detached garage, if it's 100% in the rear of the property and behind the rear building line, it may be five feet from the rear and side property boundary. That was, because it is to the rear of the home, it was believed that that was the rear yard, but because of the through street, it's not. So it was, it was an error, but again, this was fully permitted and ceased a couple weeks into commencing the activity and has remained such, but that's the only reason he can't locate it five feet, is because of the nature of that particular lot.
Okay, and I don't mean to put you on the spot with this question, but is, because there is no rear yard, is there anywhere else that they could locate a detached garage and be within?
Not within five feet, they would need to comply with their setbacks, which is what the applicant is requesting, to have a five and a half foot setback instead of the 12 that's required for that zone. So they could still have a detached garage, they just need to be within the building envelope.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Has anybody else got any questions? Mr. Parisi.
Yeah, I have one question, Amy. When you increase the size of a driveway or parking area, doesn't that require some sort of a permit or something?
You can increase your driveway right up to your property line. If you require a curb cut or something different, that would require engineering to get involved, otherwise you can, you can have wider driveways.
Well, I'm concerned about runoff.
The, I believe as the applicant stated, and I must concur in that regard, that this construction is very sort of simple beginning framing, that is not at the place where it's gonna create runoff, number one. So any runoff would have predated this structure, and silt fencing would not have been required for a detached garage. It can be required to move further, should you choose, but any water runoff is an engineering issue, but it does-
So the driveway and parking is not pertinent to this?
Well, it may be creating that, but, and again, that would be sort of engineering, would have to take care of any running, that's water that's being diverted from, but we've not had a complaint to that degree until this application.
So would gutters and things that-
From the garage.
From the-
That would be from the garage.
The applicant's point of view, no?
You know, I can't speak to the driveway whether that's creating it or not, but that's, that's would be out of the purview of zoning, in terms of-
So then that's another area. It's engineering, you would have to go-
If there's a drainage issue, but again, the driveway does not have to comply with setbacks or such.
You have to get a building permit, don't you?
To put a driveway in?
Yeah, no way, huh? Curb cut and everything.
If curb cut, you do need, if it requires a curb cut, that's engineering, because you're cutting into the street, so.
So that takes care of the driveway.
But you wanna make your driveway wider within the curb cut, you may do so.
Okay, I was just checking my own situation, good, thank you. Thank you, Mr.-
Any other questions?
I just wanna mention one thing, because the building department had approved this originally, and then it was found a little bit, I believe by the developer or the builder, was it the builder that found out that they needed the additional sideline variance?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
No, the building department originally approved this, this is why the construction began.
Correct, they fully permitted and had the materials, it should have not been signed off.
And it was the builder that found out that they needed the additional sideline.
The builder was advised after zoning received word that it may or may not be in the wrong place, and I-
Right.
You know, followed back, you know, stepped backwards to see whether the necessary permits were pulled, and they were. They shouldn't have been signed off on, and so a stop work order was immediately issued and which has led us to here.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the sideline variance for 714 Center Street.
Second.
Motion to approve the sideline variance, Mr. Parisi?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Szewinski? Ms. Tata?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Chairman Ruzak? Wait a minute, wait a minute. No.
She's gonna have to go to the microphone.
You have to go to the microphone.
Hold on, excuse me, ma'am, ma'am, the public hearing's been closed. Your chance to talk is passed.
Chairman Ruzak?
Yes.
Okay.
Your application has been approved.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
You too. Next up is application 18-015, variance request from Nesto for a front yard setback of 25.2 feet, side yard setback of 19.2 feet, and building coverage of 20.95% to construct a second-story addition at 12 Russell Street. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, we have staff notes. Applicant seeks variances to construct a second-floor addition to existing dwelling. Lot predate zoning, is undersized and non-conforming. Applicant is not expanding non-conformities relative to front and side setbacks, but is seeking variance for expansion of non-conforming building coverage due to detached garage erected in 2006. This office cannot determine a valid hardship for the granting of the numerous variances requested. Thank you.
Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Dave Chatterton.
Could you pull the microphone closer to you, please?
Certainly. Good evening, Dave Chatterton. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. My name is Dave Chatterton, from 11 Oak Drive, Beacon Falls. I come as a friend of the Nesto family to help them present their case. I hope I can be helpful in that, in that regard. Mr. Nesto is seeking to put a second-story addition on his home at 12 Russell Street. He's on a non-conforming building lot that was drawn up before zoning regulations came into effect. And I suppose the whole neighborhood is pretty much in the same condition, everybody in that neighborhood would be non-conforming if they came before the board for where their houses are located. The, the building, so I guess what I'm saying is a footprint didn't change, he just wants to put a second story on a ranch house. And I seem, seem to, I guess I would ask what your, what your, what your feelings are on something like that. Is that, is that a normal thing that you're seeing before the board? There seems to be other, other homes in the neighborhood that, that look the same.
Correct, well, one of the big questions by the planning office is your hardship for granting the numerous variances requested, and hardship usually runs with the land, and you already have numerous, or the variance for the detached garage in 2006, so you're expanding on the coverage area.
Expanding on the coverage area, sir?
Yes.
For the second story of the home?
Right, you're going, you're looking for a variance for coverage of 20.95%.
Oh, I see, I, I-
And the regulations, required by regulations is 15%.
I see where you're going with that, sir. The garage, that's- Yes.
Excuse me, would you pull the microphone up and, and then state your name and address for the record?
I'm Frank Nesto.
Okay.
The, it's an undersized lot, apparently, I guess, which we were talking about when I was down there, and it's a non-conforming lot. We purchased a house, obviously, and when it was built in the time, things changed later. So when I wanted to put a garage, a detached garage, I went down to the town, pulled all the permits, did everything I had to do, built the garage, they came out, looked at it, and then when I was down at the planning and zoning, they said that, you know, sometimes these things kinda slipped through, meaning somebody didn't pick up on the coverage of that garage, meaning I was supposed to build a smaller garage maybe, or not build a garage, but I was told I could build the garage in 2006, and we did. So I feel as though I'm not in any fault here on my coverage, or you allowed me to build that garage in 2006, being over on my coverage. So I mean, I feel like, why should I be penalized for this? I didn't do anything wrong, I paid all the permits, I paid the taxes on it, how it slipped, I don't understand.
That would be the hardship. He was granted a building permit to build this garage.
Right.
And never, never came up that it-
They came out, they measured, they taxed me on it, they, they give me the CO on it, the whole, everything was done just the way it should be done, and now they're saying I'm over on my coverage. How would I know that? If you, if the town told me I'm okay to build that size garage? And I can remember kinda quote, if I remember in my head, they told me I could have 900 square feet of garage space on my lot. I went out, I measured the single-car garage attached to my house, it was, let's say, 300. I go out and I say, okay, I could put up a 22 by 24, I think those are the measurements, that's 528, 528 and 3 is 828, I'm under the 900. So I mean, what did I do wrong? I didn't do anything wrong, I went just by what I was supposed to do, and now they're saying that I'm over, I'm overbuilt on my lot. By whose fault?
Amy, can you give us some history on this, please?
I certainly can. It's, these variances were sought, and he's absolutely correct, that they were signed off on without needing- that they were signed off on without needing the building coverage at that time of the detached garage. It's by asking for the second story, we're asking to intensify the non-conformity of the setbacks to the front and the side. So, also, we now have to ask to continue that building coverage one. So, nobody's going in arrears after your garage, but it needs to be, but we have to address everything. So, you have three variances now. That's why the garage is in there. Nobody's penalizing you for not having had to do that. But in order to apply for what you're applying for now, we have to take every non-conformity and say we want to continue it for the second story of the house. So, it's picked up now.
Correct, I understand that.
So, but nobody's penalizing you. We still have to ask for the continuation of the front and side setback. If the garage wasn't there, you still have two variances. That just added a third today.
The house was also built before time, correct? Before?
Correct, but you cannot intensify.
I understand.
You have to follow today's zoning, and today's, and your grandfathered in to have what you have there.
Correct.
But to do more, again, requires you to ask for the variance.
Okay.
And that's why we're here, and that's why the building coverage came into note. Because certainly doing the calculations is, you know, they're over, and they were not asked to seek that at the time, and nor would the in arrears going to be asked to take care of that. But moving forward, if you're asking for more, you have to bring into compliance.
I understand. Has anybody got any questions? Mr. Shawansky?
So, I just want to make sure I understand correctly. So, the issue with the coverage is the garage now because this is a new application being brought up. So, the coverage area is exceeded the fifteen percent because of the garage, which was approved previously.
That's correct, and in two thousand and six, it should have required a coverage variance. It did not. So, again, this is not to rectify something that happened in two thousand and six. It's the proper size.
Okay.
It's a proper height. It's located properly.
Yep.
The problem is the coverage. And because, flipping through the cracks, as the quote may be, very often, we forget to take the total coverage of the lot into account. So, now that we are having a new application with some variances for other things, we picked it up. So, again, nobody's taking it in arrears. It's from here forward pertinent to this application.
Thank you. Mr. Parisi?
Amy, you're saying that this is another variance request, which puts it illegal, well, not illegally, but that's what prevents it from being approved, is the removal of it? Explain it again, because I think I am confused.
That's okay. The applicant wants a second story on their home.
Right.
Any variance to be granted, they need one because they're within the setback already, the existing structure, which was predate zoning, and the lot predate zoning. It was allowed to be there, but now we want to go to a second story. We're asking for more of the same, so it would require the variance rather than comply with today. As a result, we discovered that they're over their allowed building coverage for today's zoning and the same zoning regulations that were in effect in two thousand and six. But they have to, so that makes three variances that they are requesting, and we have to entertain all three. Well, you can entertain one and not the others. I mean, that would be at the board's discretion. But they're seeking three separate variances. And I might note that there is no second story on those ranches in that area. You know, there's a couple, there's a few capes, but they're, for whatever reason, so.
Amy.
Thank you.
In the application process, was there any talk of how they could come under the correct coverage? You know, did they, was there any discussion about straightening that out?
The discussion was how to potentially be able to have a second story put on their home and what would be required to do so. And as always, the applicants and the residents are advised, demonstration of illegal hardship is at the foundation for any variance. So, if hardship is demonstrated, I was unable to identify why we would need, relative to the land, a second story. We would like it, but we have a garage, and we have living quarters, and therefore, the applicant needs to demonstrate that to you. But that was the request. They would like to do this, how can I do it? Can I do it? And this would be the only means, so.
Has anybody else got any questions? Do you have?
I'm sorry. Thank you. I know it seems like there's a little bit of concern over what the hardship is. Can you explain to us what the hardship is, why you're seeking this?
Seeking the second story?
Yeah, because we were supposed to identify what the hardship is. So, it seems like maybe we haven't heard that yet, so I just want to know if you could clarify.
Well, the hardship, you mean who's going to be living in it? Why we're putting it on?
Yeah, what is your reason for needing the variance?
I think, may I? I think the hardship is.
Put the microphone up, please.
I think, I think the hardship is the fact that the lot predate zoning. And as such, it has setbacks that are very narrow from the street and the sidelines. And to go up on the same footprint changes nothing on the ground. You just merely go up in the structure of the home. It sounds like it should be a reasonable thing, and we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the fact that it's predating zoning. If it was in a normal lot, that setbacks were fine. A second story probably would be no issue. So, it's, the hardship is that it's a lot that was created before zoning. And that's, I think, what brings us to that. I think the other thing about the square foot coverage with the garage, I think that's been well explained and how that came to be.
We're not asking for any more square footage on the ground. We're just going straight up. So, we're not going to increase anything. What's there is there, and I mean, like I say, the garage was built in oh six. It should have been stopped then if it wasn't correct. Not me. So, we just want to go straight up and put an addition on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Has anybody else got any questions? Do you have anything further to add?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anybody here who wants to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here speak against this application? And you have nothing further to add?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up for possible discussion and action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, so it's three separate variances. So, I'll make a motion on the first variance to accept the front yard setback of twenty-five point two, where forty is required, and the proposed is, I'm sorry, exists, let me restate this. I make a motion to approve the front yard setback of twenty-five feet two inches, where twenty-five feet two inches exists and forty feet is required.
Second.
Motion to approve the front yard setback, Mr. Parisi?
Uh, no.
Mr. Shawansky?
Yes.
Ms. Tada?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
No.
Chairman Ruzak?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the side yard setback of nineteen point two feet, where nineteen point two feet exists and twenty feet is required.
Second.
Motion to approve the side yard setback, Mr. Parisi?
No.
Mr. Shawansky?
Yes.
Ms. Tada?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
No.
Chair Ruzak?
No.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the building coverage of twenty point nine five percent, where twenty point nine five percent exists and fifteen percent is required.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the building coverage, Mr. Parisi?
No.
Mr. Shawansky?
No.
Ms. Tada?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
No.
Chair Ruzak?
No.
Make a motion to deny the application.
Second.
Motion to deny the application, Mr. Parisi?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Shawansky?
Yes.
Ms. Tada?
No.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Chair Ruzak?
Uh, yes, to deny. Amy, do you want us to do all three separately?
They already didn't carry, but it probably would not be a bad idea to do it individually.
Okay, can I get two more motions, please?
Make motion to deny the side yard setback.
Second.
Motion to deny the side yard setback, Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Shawansky?
No.
Ms. Tada?
No.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Chair Ruzak?
Yes.
Make a motion to deny the building coverage.
Second.
What one was that?
To deny the building coverage.
Okay.
Motion to deny the building coverage, Mr. Parisi?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Shawansky?
Yes.
Ms. Tada?
No.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Chair Ruzak?
Yes. Your application has been denied without prejudice. Nesto application up is eighteen dash zero one six, variance request from Moody for a light lot line revision at six and fourteen Fairview Avenue. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have staff notes. Applicant seeks variance as property owner for two adjacent properties at fourteen and six Fairview Avenue in order to revise the lot line for both parcels. Both lots at six and fourteen Fairview Avenue are non-conforming lots with existing dwellings. Applicant requests decrease in lot area of seventeen hundred square feet from fourteen Fairview Avenue to increase lot area by seventeen hundred square feet for six Fairview Avenue. Both lots remain non-conforming in area where conformity is required by regulations for any lot line revision. Also, an addition to the dwelling at six Fairview Avenue is currently under construction with required building permits. Submitted building plans and map dated one twenty-one eighteen identify an existing detached garage on the parcel to be removed in order to construct said addition. Property line adjustment map dated four thirteen eighteen submitted with this application locates the detached garage, thus exceeding maximum allowable building coverage before any proposed lot line revision. This office suggests a condition of any approval must be removal of the existing detached garage at six Fairview Avenue as per submitted building plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mallison Graham, six Fairview Ave.
Could you pull the microphone up closer to you so we can hear you? Thank you.
Mallison Graham, six Fairview Ave.
Can you spell your name, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
M E L L I C E N T.
And the last name?
Graham, G R A H A M.
Thank you.
I'm representing Mary Kate Moody.
Okay, please explain the application.
So, Mary Kate owns both properties, and we want to adjust the the amount of land. So, we're taking from fourteen Fairview and giving it to six Fairview, both already non-conforming. So, you're making fourteen more conforming. Or six, sorry, six more conforming.
Okay, so you're going to make six more conforming by taking some property from four?
From fourteen, yeah.
From fourteen. And also, there's a garage, existing detached garage?
Yes.
At six, correct?
Yes, at six.
And that's going to be removed?
It will be removed if we have to, per the amount of land that we take. If we still have to remove it, then we will.
Right, because according to what the planning office has advised, and what it states here is that the property line adjustment map dated four thirteen submitted with this application locates the detached garage, thus exceeding maximum allowable building coverage.
Right, that was previous to us applying to take land from.
Pardon me, could you?
That was previous, so before that, we weren't, we didn't know we were going to end up taking land, giving one and taking to the other. But now, if we get the adjustment, then there would be enough.
So, you'd have enough coverage, where you'd be under the?
Mm-hmm.
Amy, could you give me some clarification on that, please?
Well, first of all, this application, just for a point of order, is really relative to fourteen Fairview because fourteen Fairview is becoming less conform, less conforming. They're both non-conforming, but they're the one giving away to make another one. So, when they're supposed to be brought into conformity. So, just a point of clarification for the application, which property it refers to. So, that being said, the building permits for the second story or addition, you know, the addition work that's happening at number six currently, the plans submitted, the A two survey submitted, identified an existing two-car detached garage of, I'm not sure of the size, I shouldn't say.
One car.
Okay, yeah, but a detached garage to be removed. So, that was part of the building permit. When we received the variance application for the lot line revision, the garage remained, and thus, I think that being the, I certainly won't speak on behalf of the applicant, but I think that was the idea was now if we adjust the line, I can keep it. That would be up to the board whether they do or not because that currently, without the lot line revision, that puts another variance in order to have that remain. So, however, you know, a potential condition could be put. Doesn't necessarily have to be to remove it, but only if the lot line revision is granted, you know, whatever. But that's the question now. Now, it appeared to change, but that perhaps was the point of the lot line revision. So, but they are two non-conforming lots, and once again, with this non-conformity, we're sort of touching upon that with every application this evening. In this case, again, the idea is not to create another non-conforming lot, but these already have dwellings on them. So, we're taking from one, giving to another, just about negates itself, so.
So, just for clarification, if we were to approve this and allow the garage to stay, they would need to come for coverage variance?
No, only if the lot line revision does not move forward as proposed.
What was that? Could you say that again, please?
If, I said, only if they don't follow through with the lot line revision, then it would be over. If they move the lot line, they're not over on coverage. They're over today.
Okay, so once we, if we approve the lot line?
It needs to happen as a condition of keeping the garage, or the garage needs to go. It just suggested avenues to take your conditions.
It wasn't, we didn't apply to keep the garage. We applied because my mother owns both properties, and we're living in six Fairview, so we live next door to each other. So, it didn't have anything to do with the garage. It really had everything to do with making the lot that we're living in bigger. We have kids, you know.
Okay. Has anybody got any questions for the applicant? Mr. Shawansky?
So, by moving the line, the lot is conforming with the garage?
The lots are both remaining non-conforming. However, they. The lots are both remaining non-conforming, however, there is not a coverage issue, correct, with number six?
Thank you. Anybody else got any questions? Do you have any further to add?
No.
Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against this application? Please state your name and address for the record.
Pierre Gauvea, thirty-four Lincoln Drive, soon to be ninety-three Fair Street, I've no, or Fair Street.
Can you spell your last, sir? Can you spell your last name?
G.O.U.V.E.I.A. Before there's misunderstanding, I, I rise to speak in favor of this application, not against it.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, all I wanna say, and I didn't come here for that reason today, but I noticed these applicants are before you, and, uh, all I wanted to say is that there was a high sorb before. I lived in that area for many, many years. There was an extremely high sorb. These people have done an outstanding job. I would certainly urge you to go ahead and grant their application. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody speak against this application? Do you have any further?
I don't.
I'm gonna close the public hearing and open it up for possible discussion and action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve, uh, application number eighteen dash zero one six to reduce and reconfigure and, that's how it's written here, I'm actually gonna reword that, uh, to reconfigure non-conformity um, where an existing non-conformity where current non-conformity exists and conformity is required by regulations.
Second.
Motion to approve.
I have a po- point of information. Is that allowing the garage to stay?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Okay. No.
All right, motion to approve, Mr. Parisi.
No.
Mr. Zawinski.
Yes.
Ms. Tada.
Yes.
Mr. Rice.
Yes.
Chair Ruzak.
Yes. Your application's been, uh, approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is eighteen dash zero one eight, variance request from Blue to expand non-conforming use at sixty-five South Colony Street, Unit D. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
We do, a lot. Uh, first I'll read the staff notes. Applicant currently leases Unit D of the property at sixty-five South Colony Street. Entire property is non-conforming. Applicant currently is approved for the non-conforming use of indoor recreation with identified limits of clients four, employees, should I also read four?
Six.
Amy, I'm sorry, I think there might be a number missing in your notes. Um, sorry. Just wanna make sure I stated properly. Um, there's just a number missing. So it says applicant currently is approved for the non-conforming use of indoor recreation with identified limits of clients four, employees, should there be a number there?
Employees and parking spaces of six.
Okay, so both six.
Should've been zero employees, I, you know, the single employee, sorry, my apologies, yes, there is a typo there. Four clients, uh, no employees and the, and six parking spaces.
Okay.
Or the, the own, the business owner was the only, um, employee.
Okay, thank you. Applicant is seeking the expansion of the non-conforming use to fifteen clients and fifteen parking spaces. Applicant proposes limited hours of operation and alternate off-site client parking options to minimize and/or reduce the impact on neighboring businesses and properties. And then we have correspondence from uh, Louis Avila dated, uh, today, I believe, seven sixteen eighteen. Sorry. We have, uh, a packet of pictures submitted, um, with the application dated six eight eighteen. We have a letter from Lauren Blue dated June fifteenth, two thousand eighteen. I'm sorry, that was, um, signed by Fugals Furniture, um, and also signed by Lauren Blue. Also a letter dated June fifteenth from Splat Art Studio, also, um, submitted by Lauren Blue. A letter dated June fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, signed by Raymond Motors, submitted by Lauren Blue. A letter dated June fifteen, two thousand eighteen from Liz Landau, Executive Director, Wallingford Center Inc. A letter dated June fifteen, two thousand eighteen from Kelly McDermott. A letter dated June fifteen, two thousand eighteen from Jennifer Loquen, D B M. A letter dated June fifteenth, two thousand eighteen from Amity Wall. A letter dated June fifteen, two thousand eighteen from Serena Boulier. A letter dated June fifteen, two thousand eighteen from Deborah Hicks. A letter dated June fifteen, two thousand eighteen from Liz Davis. And a letter dated June fifteen, two thousand eighteen from Rachel Sest, I hope I'm saying that correctly. And I believe that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Lauren Blue, ninety-four Lanes Pond Road, Northford.
Please explain your application.
My application is to, um, have fifteen clients. My certificate of occupancy increased as well as fifteen parking spaces for, um, sixty-five South Colony Unit D in Wallingford.
Okay, and how many spaces do you have now? Six?
I currently have six, yes.
And that is, your six spots are in the rear, front? I mean, I'm familiar with the property, I'm just trying to figure out where.
They're in the front and the rear.
In the front and the rear. You thought, you, are you considering street parking as part of it?
Yes.
Okay. And so you wanna go up to fifteens?
Yes, um, during limited hours of operation. It would be for nine AM as well as, um, five and six PM in the evening. Uh, I generally only see one to three clients during the day. Uh, my busiest hours are nine AM, five and six PM, and, uh, ten AM on Saturdays as well as, um, seven PM Monday through Thursday, however, that would be under fifteen people, so.
And the seven PM, how long would that class last?
Uh, an hour and twenty minutes.
And normally, how many people per class?
Uh, generally during the day, it's one to four people. Um, I started off as a personal training studio and then I moved to group training, which, again, I do at nine AM and, uh, five, six and seven o'clock. Seven o'clock is usually a Kung-Fu class, which I do not conduct, um, but I have someone who sublets the building and uses it for Kung-Fu, so.
Okay, so, um, you share that space?
I do.
Now, are you gonna continue to share the space, or are you taking it over?
Uh, I fully intend to continue to share it. I'm there about anywhere from five to eight hours a day, sometimes ten, but, um, I share it when I'm not there. I have someone there. So no one else is there conducting classes when I am, just me.
Okay, um, and where have you identified that you're gonna pick up these extra spots?
Um, I have people park on Prince Street. I put up a parking sign that directs people to park either directly in front of my gym or to use Prince Street or the parking on Cunipiac Street. Um, the original violation letter says that some of my clients were parking in the lots that surround, uh, my gym, which is why I submitted those letters, because those businesses then and went and signed letters saying that they haven't had an issue with me in the past, essentially nullifying the notice of violation, because it says that there was a stack of complaints, but everyone is in support of it, so I don't know. Yeah, I just plan to use the public parking. I have direct contact with all of my clients. We text message, uh, via cellphone, so if they need to park somewhere specific, I tell them to park there and they're compliant with it, so.
Yeah, I, I, um, very happy that you're expanding and, and, uh, doing well. That's very good for you and for Wallingford. Uh, Mike, and I'm not saying it's your customers, not saying it at all.
Okay.
But I have heard, and I'm probably thinking it was maybe the wine business, I'm not sure, I'm not pointing any fingers, but I have heard of, um, there are issues with parking down there and, um, and you go by there at noon time and, um, the little deli's doing very well, too.
Yes.
Um, I, I just I, I have to wonder if you've overgrown the space.
Um, I do not feel I have. I think mostly I don't feel that way, because I only see generally one to four people, um, during the day. My hours of operation that I would have my busy time are after the eatery is closed, um, as, and the winery is also not open to the public currently anymore. Uh, I just feel like I was sort of caught in the crossfire here and I think, um, you know, provided my clients continue to park where they're supposed to, I don't really see my business being an issue, just because I don't, um, park other people's lots and there's, I mean, there's forty-plus spaces on Prince Street that are empty. I, I have pictures and things that I also submitted essentially showing you that during my busiest, busiest hours, um, there's a, you know, there's abundant parking out in the front of our building. So we are all successful, but we kind of have different hours of success, like, so to speak, so.
Well, you must be doing something right. You have all these people here tonight.
Yeah, most of them are my clients.
Has anybody got any questions?
I'd like to say something about the parking also.
Oh, go ahead. Uh, your name and address for the record.
Michael Shehe, three ninety-nine Main Street, Eelsville. I'm the property owner. Um, two years ago, we came in here and we got an approval to put a wine bar in that same space. And they decided that the parking on Cunipiac Street and Prince Street and out front was sufficient back then. That would've been sufficiently more cars. You, you could've had thirty or forty cars a- at any given time, which would be a lot more than what Lauren's using now. And we did get that approved, although we had a neighbor that was appealing us. So I just wanted to add that in.
I, I, I'm, be honest with you, I'm aware of what's kind of what's going on. I'm around and, um, I'm happy to see it. I'm gonna be honest with you. When you drive by and you see the deli's doing well and, and, uh, everything else, but, um, there's also other businesses in the area that are affected, and I'm not saying it's, it's I think, um, the wine business might've had a little bit to do with it. I'm not a hundred percent sure about that. I'm, again, I'm not pointing fingers. Um, and I know the deli, I don't think they're open past two, three o'clock. I, I don't, you know, lunchtime, you can't get a parking on the street.
They're very busy at lunchtime, but after that, that.
But I do know, um, evenings, um, there have been issues in, in that other parking area.
A lot of that has to do with the Portuguese Club.
Well, I, I was gonna go there, too. There's the Portuguese Club also that, um, but, you know, it's all one added thing, and I'm not saying she's even a part of it with.
Quite honestly, she, I, I think she has nothing to do with any of that. A lot of it did have to do with the winery. Um, they have ceased their operation as far as having people down there. They're back to just making wine again. So I think that's gonna quiet that down, and I think with Mark Rele's property, that was the, you know, that was a struggle there.
Okay. Has anybody got any questions? Uh, Mr. Rice.
If, if, if I understand correctly, the winery has kind of, mm, they've moved their.
They've moved their operation out of town.
Okay. Now, that property is directly behind
Yes, it is.
Has parking been taken into consideration back there? I mean, I understand up on Prince Street you got plenty of parking, because I know, I see it.
Lauren has never used the parking back there. That is, you know, the parking back there is part of the whole building, obviously. Um, but she's never used that parking back there anyways. Uh, her clients have always been out front or on Prince Street. So it, it really doesn't affect that, and, and they've never used Stella's parking lot over there at all. They've had no reason to.
If, if they want to use the wine property back there for parking, can they?
They certainly could, but there'd be no reason to.
A stamp, uh, was that taken into consideration?
The parking issue and the variances for such were granted to the property. So if the wine place is not there, and they are still there, they're just conducting the business that they should have been doing per their variance already. They had expanded beyond. But the next tenant also is restricted to the same thing, so we can't give up their parking, because somebody else is gonna potentially come in if and when they leave and have parking needs. So you have to look at the whole parcel and, and Ms. Blue's portion of it.
Right now, the winery has no intentions of leaving. They're just, they've changed they're using, gone back to where they started from, which is just manufacturing wine.
But we, yeah, we just can't take their spaces or their allotment, whether they're there or not, and, and shift them around. They belong to the parcel, so.
But, you know, there's ample parking downtown between Cunipiac Street and Prince Street, so it's not.
I don't run a business that is just like a free-for-all. Like I said, I, I have direct contact with all of the people that are here um, and the people that come to my gym, so when there's a specific number of people, I mean, they know where to park, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, s- so, one of the letters we did receive, um, was a complaint from, um, two businesses in, uh, the Wallingford Center Plaza. Um, and they said that, uh, your building, where your business only has a few parking spots in the rear, and so people come into their lot to use that. Um, so how many, how many spaces does, does the building that you're in have total?
It's either eighteen or twenty-two, I'm not sure.
And that's in a parking lot?
I think Amy would know that.
I'd have to go back to the office and get that. There are very, there's not ample parking for the, for the needs there, for the different uses. Um, so there, you know, there were some bargaining wishes, and, and just for the record as well, um, the indoor recreation use does not have an identified parking requirement. This, this all came about as a, uh, a letter proposing these conditions on, on the occupancy. The four, four clients, because there, there's just not enough all around, and it is in the neighborhood of twenty-something, but there should've been sixty-something for all the uses at the time, so.
Okay.
It's, it's significantly under, which is why the limitations of, of the parcel on the, on its, on its tenants, so.
Our argument the first time was the fact that all the different establishments throughout Center Street do not have the same parking. We have more parking than they do.
How many businesses are in the building?
Five right now.
And, and approximately twenty parking spaces?
Correct.
For five businesses, okay. And, um, in the staff notes that, um, we mentioned before, it says applicant proposes limited hours of operation, alternate off-site client parking options to minimize or reduce the impact on neighboring businesses. Can you just explain what, um, you know, if you have any other alternate ideas or where you would encourage people to park?
Um, provided Prince Street was completely occupied, which I have not seen. Um, a couple of the letters in there, including, um, Fugals and Splat Art Studio, did offer their spaces when they were not operating, which just happens to be my busiest times. Um, Splat Art Studio is a drop-off facility, so her parking lot is generally never used. Um, but other than that, I don't, I never really have fifteen people, is sort of the point I'm trying to make. Um, but I would hate to cap my business, you know, at a lower number, so, um, I really think that there's ample parking. I understand that there have been issues in the past with people from our building, potentially my clients in the past parking, um, where they should not have. However, I have had signage. The second I got the idea that this was a complaint, I have a huge sign in my gym that says, "Street Parking Only," uh, you know, relocating everyone to Prince Street, so there haven't been any complaints to me since, so.
Okay, yeah, and, and I appreciate that, 'cause I, I know that one letter, um, you know, that said that they do park in Wallingford Center Plaza, that I appreciate that you would, you know, have signage and, and structure.
I'm not here to squash small business. Um, I fully support my, you know, my neighboring businesses. I do a small business card drawing every, uh, two weeks to draw business into my surrounding businesses, so they offer a free service. Um, Stella Pizza is included in that, um, Splat Art Studio, Raymond Motors, they all offer a free service or a percentage off for my clients that pick a business card to, you know, bring business into them. off for my clients that pick a business card to, you know, bring business into them. So I'm, I'm here in support of all that. I'm not trying to squash any businesses, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prezy?
Yeah, there's, uh, one, one line here. It says applicant proposes limited hours of operation and alternate off-site client parking options. What is that?
Um, the alternate off-site would be using Splat Art Studio, um, or Fu Cults, or the, the public parking.
And what about limited hours of operation?
Uh, that only suggests that currently I'm only asking to, to increase my certificate of occupancy as well as requiring more parking, not for eight to ten hours a day. It would be, you know, nine in the morning, which no one really has a lot of clients around at that time, um, and in the evening as well.
Yeah, the, the pictures that you sent show a lot of space.
Yes.
At nine o'clock in the morning, it's not the.
Right.
The busiest street in town.
No, it's not. Um, my busiest hours, there's a picture in there actually, at, I think at five-thirty, when I had eleven or twelve people in my business, and it was a ghost town out front, uh, because they used the Prince Street parking, uh, you know, as asked to, so.
Well, I, uh, I'll commend your honesty, 'cause you have a picture of your gym with eleven people in it, so I, you're not hiding anything, are you?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, i- if I may, uh, I'd like to request a five-minute recess.
Certainly.
Okay.
Certainly.
Personal reason?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We're just gonna take a five-minute recess. Like to bring the meeting back to order. Um, I'd like to just get your hours of operation down, so just need to go over that again.
Yep. It's, um, nine AM, Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday. And how long are the classes, nine AM?
An hour.
One hour? So, nine to ten?
Nine to ten, yes.
Do, I mean, is everybody out of the building by, I, I just don't want to get you caught, is what I'm.
Uh, so if the next class is at ten, they're usually leaving at nine fifty-five, so there really isn't any overlap.
Okay, so, so Monday through Friday, nine to ten AM?
Yep.
Okay, and then what?
Um, and then it would be five PM on the safe side, say five PM to eight-thirty, Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday, five PM to eight-thirty PM?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, um, Saturday, um, eight AM to twelve PM to be on the safe side.
Eight AM to twelve PM?
Yep.
On Saturday?
Yep.
And then that's it?
Yep.
Okay. Does anybody have any more questions?
Mr. Chairman, just in regards to the hours, um, the other, the other people that you said use the gym, um, when are, to, one of their classes?
Within the times I, I offered.
Those times?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Prezy.
Uh, in the past, did all your neighbors offer their parking area to you, or is that something new? Whoever?
You know, we, we've never had that in, in part being, any part of the discussion before.
So it's new now?
This is something that's just come up with this application, uh, with the violations that we had gotten. We'd gone around and talked to the neighbors to see, you know, what could be done to make things better. And Lauren and I actually went and talked to every single one of the neighbors. And, uh, that's where we're at.
So you've increased your parking area on your own, in essence?
More or less, yeah.
I'd, I'd say, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. You have any disagreement with that, or? Okay.
Thanks. Okay, um, I'm gonna go out to the public. And I realize there's a lot of you people in, in, in favor, and, and I'm happy to see you. It's great. But if you wanna come up to the microphone and have something to say, and I know you're all gonna say it's great, and she cares about it, and she lets you know about parking, I realize all that. But if you have something you really feel you need to, um, present, just so it doesn't get redundant, um, I ask you to come forward. But, um, just to try and keep the redundancy down of the same thing. So is there anybody here to speak in favor of the application? Go ahead. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Uh, good evening. My name is Kate Slomkowski. I live at thirty-two Wiffle Tree Road in Wallingford. You want me to, to spell? Uh, S is in Sam, L O M K O W S K I. Um, I help run one of the Kung-Fu classes at Lauren's gym. So about a year ago, our studio closed, and we had nowhere to practice. And I reached out to Lauren. She very graciously gave us time. We've been there for about a year now. There's a very small group of us, and the appeal of the space is that it's small. You can't have a big thirty-person class there. Just, you just don't have the space for it. So the appeal is that you could have these small, tight-knit classes. And you see it in her group fitness classes, too. They're small groups. See, everyone supports each other. And that's what, that's really what the, the appeal is for us. We wouldn't want like a huge space. We like that it's small. We like that it's intimate, that it's kinda private there. And I mean, the gym, I mean, you've seen it. The gym's gorgeous. She maintains it really nicely. We help out with that. Um, it's a really great sense of community. And when we did, um, form the agreement to use the space, Lauren was very clear about the parking. So we really made sure that we adhered to that. We park on Prince Street, or, um, we were parking in front, but now we try to park on Prince Street to leave as my, as much space as possible. And of course, we're very supportive of Lauren. If there's anything else that we need to do to keep this gym running, fully support it. She's doing a great job. She's helping people get fit. She's giving us a place to practice our art, and we really appreciate it. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'll speak in favor? Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Kelly McDermott. I am a client of Lauren's since December of twenty-seventeen. Um, I am new to Wallingford, and I am originally from the Middletown area. I had a gym that I belonged to when I was in Middletown, um, and they relocated way up to the Berlin Turnpike. And so all of a sudden, I was driving from Wallingford to the Berlin Turnpike. And I think it's really important to just mention that Lauren's gym provides a very unique setting in Wallingford that you can't find at other fitness facilities. She offers personal training classes in a very small group setting. And not to be redundant, the space does not provide for more than ten people at a time in general just because of its size. You can't have a fitness class and get anything out of it if you're gonna have twenty people in this tiny space. Um, I would also just like to say that since I've been a member, I primarily attend classes from five to seven PM, uh, and on Saturday mornings at ten AM. Parking has never been an issue for me personally. I park on Prince Street, or I park directly in front of her building because there is a parking space available. And Lauren has been extremely diligent about communicating with us where we should and should not park. And that includes the parking lot that has a lot of controversy around it, where there's designated parking spots for specific businesses. I don't think any one of us in this room would say we have parked in that lot, or if we were, that was an error, and we do not continue to park in that lot. So, um, we have spent a lot of time trying to take pictures and demonstrate to you that parking is not a problem during her areas of peak operation. So thank you for your time tonight. Thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Sir? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Bruce Torgerston. I grew up here in Wallingford and moved away and.
Sir, can you spell your last name?
Yes, T O R G E R S O N.
G, what is it?
Yeah. Uh, I graduated school here in, in sixty-nine and moved away for forty-five years. And I've got a master's in social work. I'm a health science officer, retired. Um, and I'm a good judge of character. And Ms. Lauren is a good character. I did volunteer work, or do volunteer work at sixty-five, um, South Colony Road since early August of last year. So I'm very much aware of what's going on at that building, um, the concerns. And one of the things that really concerns me is, you know, I moved back to Wallingford to retire, and because I've always bragged about Wallingford, you know, being from this part of the world and.
Could you move closer to the microphone, sir?
Yes, I will. Yeah, I used to be a performer, so I should know better than that.
Lift it up.
I should have brought my guitar. Um, and I apologize for that. Um, I lived in a town called Little Rock, Arkansas for thirty-five years. And I'll make this as quick as I can. And it was always these parking restrictions. It was a place called Lower Cantrell Hill, where there was twelve businesses, and ten of them had park only, park only, park only, or be towed away. And, and I've been to St. Louis, Memphis, Dallas, and they have areas of old town where they work with each other. All the establishments work with each other, help each other, encourage each other. Park here, go see that place, go see that place. And what I've noticed since I've moved back to Wallingford two and a half years ago, sitting on the fence looking in, there's a lot of parking only issues, and that's sad. You know, it's not a community. And when I was a little boy, walking up and down Center Street, looking at the cemetery, looking at the people that established this, this town, this country, what would they be thinking? You know, what, what's going on with this? You can't park here, can't park there. So that's really basically what I have to say. But I'm a good judge of character. There's three kinds of people. People that are part of the solution, part of the problem, people that do nothing. And if I didn't come here tonight, I'd be sitting on my couch doing nothing, which is part of the problem. Lauren is part of the problem. I'm part of the problem. Part of the solution. I'm sorry. Ah, that was a Freudian slip. I used to have a master's in social work. No, but she's very much, you know, I, I'm a good judge of character, like I said. And I've been at that building every single day since, most every single day, since last August. And, and I'm very much aware, and she's, she's a good person. And the people that go to her place are part of the solution as well, as there are the other establishments in that building, had people that come that were part of the solution in life. So that's basically what I had to say.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Uh, my name's John. My wife Leah Masella.
Could you speak in the microphone a little clearer? We didn't hear your last name.
John Masella.
Can you spell that, please?
M A S E L L A.
And Leah Masella?
L E A H?
Yeah.
So, um, we own the eatery, uh, and we, I guess shortly I would acknowledge, yes, um, we have felt the parking, um, challenges, and we understand that, um, as all of the surrounding businesses grow, that intensifies. Um, but simply, I would say that, um, we would be dishonest if we, um, said we've never felt that even towards Lauren. There's been times where we said, oh, look at all these cars. Um, but in reality, we've come to the realization that we'd rather have that than nothing. And the relationship has grown to a point where we could sit there and feel maybe even jealous or conflicted towards that, but just to recognize that, um, it hasn't affected our business. It's grown it. Um, and just the small things, in many small ways, it just builds up the community and the people. And just seeing the people even from her class come in, um, and how it's affected them, um, and how we've been able to even support her. Um, and we're right next door. So, um, if anything, I feel like we would have the most issue with her, uh, but she has been nothing but a great neighbor. And, um, just, uh, a great, I mean, financially speaking, if we're gonna just talk that, great. Um, but it goes beyond that.
I can, uh, just make a quick comment, just about the timeframe that she's talking about. Um, we're, we're open at seven-thirty AM in the morning, but we are dead until pretty much lunchtime. We don't really promote our breakfast, um, 'cause we're busy in the back with catering. So the street, I can say for sure that, just like you see in the pictures, they're not fudged. It is completely a dead zone at nine AM, and totally in the evenings, with the exception of people parking maybe to go to the Portuguese Club or something in the evening, um, the street is pretty much not full. And, and we also constantly try to, uh, talk to our customers about where to park. I think it's interesting that, Lauren, you have to actually schedule to go to her. Like, you schedule your times for the next week with her. So she knows exactly when people are coming and how many people will be coming at each, a lot at time. So I would say that she has constant communication with her clients, um, for sure. And we are, our business is not affected by it, and, um, I'm, I'm in support of her. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody else wanna speak in favor? Yes, ma'am in front.
Hello, my name is Gina Monti. My last name is spelled M O N T I. And I live in Middletown, Hunting Hill Avenue, Middletown. So I am, uh, another practitioner of Kung-Fu, although I'm not wearing the uniform that Kate's wearing tonight. So, uh, just a practical comment. I don't really mind parking where I am now to come down to the gym, but a lot of us bring a lot of equipment, and it would just be beneficial to park in front of the gym to bring them in. Uh, just as also a concerned person, I would just hate to see someone have to walk across the street to get through their car if, God forbid, they got hurt or something. 'Cause it is a gym and it's fitness. So I just wanted to, uh, speak to the practicality of the benefit of having more parking available in the front. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am in the back?
Cindy Tiedemann from Ten Nathan's Path in Wallingford.
You're gonna have to spell it, and I couldn't hear you.
T S and Tom, I E D E M A N N, like tidy man. So I originally had a very long letter that I wrote, um, on the behalf of Lauren. Um, I first became her client two years ago, maybe. Um, from the very first day, I can assure you, I'm like, I'm here, where is this place? She's like, what's around you? I'm like, I see a Stella Pizza sign. She came running into the parking lot and said, you need to get out. That is not where we park. So I immediately was instructed to park in the front, and if I couldn't park in the front, to park on Prince Street, we're in Splat. Was, wasn't Splat at the time, but it was very clear we'd park. Um, but I don't even think that's the concern anymore, because I hear everybody talking about parking. There's plenty of parking. What I'm concerned about is the fact that she found out she has a limit of the number of people that can come to her establishment at one time. And it's insane to think that it could be four people. Her group classes push you, and seeing everybody perform pushes you more. We've got a society of unfit people, and she's making them fit. Why would we in any way discourage that business? We don't want her to move. Don't make her move. She can take this business anywhere. She's got a following. They're gonna go with her. You're gonna lose a business. When she needs people in a group that can support one another, that can help one another, she's showing us all what to do, we're all in there making sure that the next week, we don't give up doing those push-ups or those burpees. So I just wanna make sure we're getting both points across. Parking, big concern, very much taken care of by her. I don't believe it's her group that has the problem. But to limit the number of people to four individuals at a time, that's crippling. That's taking her business and saying, we don't want you here. And I want her here, so I'm just here to support her. That's all.
Thank you. Um, at this time, I'm gonna cut off the in favor. I think we got a good grasp on how everybody feels, um, in the, in favor. And to move the meeting along, I'm going to, um, ask, is there anybody here against this application? Yes, sir? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is David Markarelli. I live at twelve Justine Drive, North Haven, Connecticut, and I'm a partner in Wallingford Associates, twenty-three South Colony Road. We're here tonight, you know, we're not looking to sing aloud any, any business. We are the owners of the plaza that has most of the parking issues. We're not here to pick on anybody, but you know, I think some of these arguments contradict themselves. They said they have parking on Prince Street. They said they have alternate means by talking to other businesses to park. So they're saying they really don't have a problem parking. So why, why ask for a variance? They've taken care of that. Again, I stated earlier, the variance goes with the building. We have no problem with her business. I'm sure she's a wonderful woman. I'm sure she's an excellent fitness coach. But what happens if she does move out? That building now carries that variance for the parking spaces and we're still stuck as land, as a landlord of our plaza. So I'm gonna read a brief letter that's written on behalf of my family and my other partners, just to kind of summarize what the frustration that we've been going through. The plaza at twenty-three South Colony Road has been in our family for over forty years. In all those years, we have never experienced the problems with parking until sixty-five South Colony Street has been allowed to transform from a location that used to house a cabinet fabricator with limited parking needs to a large building that now houses a restaurant, a caterer, a psychiatrist, a cleaning company, a wine club, and a gym that is now looking to expand. Not only looking to expand, but three-fold lure whether currently allowed to have in there. There are frankly just not enough parking spaces and it's become a nightmare for our, for our plaza. I'm sure you've heard from our occupants in our, in our plaza complaining. I know the police department has heard from our tenants and it's a, and it's an issue. Our anchor store, which my father started White's Cleaners from the inception, I can't remember how, how far back ago and I see all these people looking to, you know, support small business, support small business. My father started White's Cleaners probably seventy years ago that was still in business until recently. We have a large vacant spot in our, in our plaza at this time. We had two potential renters or leases that came and looked at that spot, both leaving citing the lack of parking in our parking spot for businesses that we're trying to rent. Again, bringing in small businesses to the town of Wallingford. So we're not anti-small businesses. We were raised and we grew up in a small business in the town of Wallingford. Again, it's nice that they can make deals and, and sign verbal agreements, oral agreements with other businesses that say, you have permission to park in our, in our parking lot? That's fine, as long as they're gonna, they're gonna withhold that. But you make it a variance and now it's, it comes with the building. And what happens when she finally does, and I hope she does successfully expand her business and grow and not that she, I wanna see her move out, I'd love to see her grow, but what if she does move out? What goes in there next? And now where do they park? Are they gonna be as, as accommodating as her clients are and they're all saying that they're gonna be? There's no guarantee in that. So we are here to adamantly be against this variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak against this application?
My name is Peter Govea, thirty-four Lincoln Drive, Wallingford. Zoning boards exist like yours to mediate, facilitate new businesses in town. And we offer new business in town. However, when those new businesses infringe on, on, on the privilege of others like Stella's Pizzeria or, or the gentleman just spoke about, or the Portuguese Club. Now, the Portuguese Club has been there since nineteen, I think before nineteen sixty-five. I've been a member since nineteen sixty-five. It was not until three years ago that we started, three or four years ago, they started having problems with parking. Now, it's true that they have five or six more business in that building than now that they had before. Now, every time somebody uses that, those businesses, they trespass in the club property. They trespass. If they fall in winter time, we're liable. And yet they continue, now they have parking in, in the back. They just told you that they have parking in the back of the building. Do you think they go around Quinipiac Street to go to the back of the building? No, they go to the next driveway, which happens to be right next to the building, which is our driveway and they trespass in that driveway and they go back to the, to the back of their building. They are trespassing the Portuguese Club. If they fall, it's a liability. I know their businesses in the plaza next door, they're suffering tremendously. In fact, one time I went to park there and I couldn't park there because I was, they had an officer there redirecting the traffic because there were too many people from the businesses. Now, I know that the wine, as was stated before, the wine club was probably the biggest culprit. I'm not here to speak against this particular applicant. I'm here to speak about the fact that when you grant permission for people, people to use those variances, the people to use that, they abuse those variances and the wine club is one particular instance of that where they abused the variance that they got, they expanded and it took over a year for, for the complaint to reach you. And meantime, we suffer, the businesses along, along the way suffer and everybody suffer. I, I'm saying to you that before you are granted any more variances, listen to what this gentleman just said. Remember that the variances goes with the business, goes with the building and then later on they expand, you're gonna have, they have problems and, and they don't have parking. They really do not have parking. This is a building that probably had, I think they mentioned twenty parkings. I, I venture to say they probably have less than that, less than twenty parking spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Is there anybody who'd like to speak against this application?
Hi, my name is Cindy Fiorentino and I own Stella Pizza. I am not against any small business. I am a small business. I've been there for thirty-one years. I've never gone through so much stuff that I have the past three years. The parking is horrible. People are rude and mean. We have signs everywhere. Nobody cares and nobody has helped me. None of the businesses at sixty-five South Colony has helped me at all. Lauren has, Lauren has put up a sign the past couple of weeks saying private parking lot, but nobody else has cared, has helped us, has done nothing. I am out there in the middle of my lunch trying to move people and they're rude and they're mean and they don't care. I have never, ever in thirty-one years gone through so much like I have in three years. I, I don't know what to say. I mean, people do not understand a private parking lot. We have people there at night to watch the parking lot when the winery was all going on. Meanwhile, the winery was taking spaces and then when it got to me, there was none. I lost thirty to forty percent of my business in the past three years. And I have to thank sixty-five South Cherry. There's so many businesses there that shouldn't, you know, they don't help each other out. Everybody is for small business, small business, but nobody has helped me out at all and none of those. There's no signs in the windows except Lauren's. There's no other signs in the eatery, nobody. There's a doctor's office here now? Where did they come from? I had to move five people out Saturday and they were going to the doctor's office. I'm like, what doctor's office? They said, right there. So now there's a doctor's office here. Now there's five businesses there and there's no parking. And you know who gets the burden? Me, because I'm happy to be right there and I, I'm getting the blood of everything and it's not right, it's not fair. You know, no, I don't know how many more signs we can put out without anybody understanding, but I wish everybody would come together, especially sixty-five South Colony. Come together and, and say no parking there, say it's a private lot, but nobody does anything. They should be having people out in our parking lot and having them move people out instead of me being out there, a business owner, trying to run inside and cook and going out there and doing it myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak against this application?
My name is Angelo Ferrera. Seventy, I'm sorry, fifteen Maplewood Ave, Wallingford. In addition to what's been said, I mean, it's, it's true, I've witnessed it, I wasn't, witnessed the parking issues. I'm actually speaking on behalf of the Portuguese American.
Speak into the microphone or pull it up or whatever so we can hear you. Thank you.
Speaking on behalf of the Portuguese American, we've had the same issues. The bigger concern is, is the cutting through. People, if they are gonna use their, their backlog, people are not gonna go around to Quinipiac Ave, they're gonna cut through and that's a liability issue for us. In addition, there's, there are gutters on the building, they, they don't have gutters. It creates a, a nice problem, sometimes about a foot deep that should be addressed by the owner, which has not been. Excuse me, I'd also like to add that in the old days, there used to be a gravel siding which was used by the cabinetry place and created more parking space for them. Currently, there's only a right-of-way and there's not that many parking spaces available to all those businesses. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Yes, yes, sir.
Good evening. Pat Markarelli. I'm one of the partners at the twenty-three South Colony Road, the plaza in question. One thing I did wanna make clear to the panel, and I think it was brought up from the Portuguese people, to the liability, the liability that we as property owners have to endure. We have to plow the lot, we have to plow the sidewalks. We're in charge of doing that and we do a darn good job with it. We also mentioned like the, the right-of-way in the back there, you know, we have, we have to hire the contractors for that. We've had in the past and most recently in the past, we've had to have parking attendants hired to come and patrol the lots. That's just an additional burden for us. I just wanted to make sure that was brought up and clear to the board. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak against this application? Seeing none, do you have any further, anything further you wanna add?
I have a few comments.
Go ahead.
For starters, I go through that parking lot at Stella's pretty much every single day of the week, right around lunchtime. And there are, there is no one from our building in there. They do have it policed. They have a, a parking lot attendant there, not always, but sometimes. I've yet to see Cindy out there, never, ever, ever. And I go through every single day of the week. I check it personally. Okay, as far as for the Portuguese club, well, they happened to go there last Saturday, they'd see there was about thirty cars in our parking lot that belonged to one of their functions. I own that right-of-way back there, nobody else does. So I, I've still allowed the Portuguese people to use our parking lot and I haven't complained. They did put up signs, they didn't want us on their parking lot, they don't even want anybody walking through there. I did have an agreement with them for several years that we would coexist, they'd use mine, I'd use theirs. They opt to change that. Why, I don't know why they did that, but they did. There is nobody walking through their parking lot anymore either. The people that use the eatery actually walk through the building. No one at all uses their parking lot. So they're wrong about that also. And I do police my building and I do know what my tenants are doing. So a little bit of theatrics over there, wasn't really too clear. Not really appreciated either, quite honestly, because it wasn't very truthful.
With all due respect to the business owners that spoke before, I just wanna be clear on, on my behalf, at least, you know, since this is my variance application just for specifically unit D at sixty-five South Colony, none, none of my clients walk through and would be considered a liability because I'm sort of, you know, asking to use Prince Street and public parking in front, so I don't see that my clients would be a liability issue because they wouldn't be walking through their parking lot anyway. So that's all I wanted to say.
They're literally on opposite ends of the property.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just wanna keep this from getting from, so if you have something you wanna add that's, instead of going back and forth, that allow to come back up and say something, would you like, Cindy, would you like to come back up?
Yes, I guess I'm on a roll today. Mike, you're wrong. I'm out there every day with my parking lot. I never see you drive through my parking lot at all. And I've known for forty years, Mike, I've never seen you drive through my parking lot. I have seen poor.
Cindy.
Okay, can we, can we keep this to, if you have some facts that you wanna add instead of going back?
Okay, I am there, I'm out in the parking lot. Every lunch, you can ask a few people that come in at lunchtime that are here right now. I am out there almost every day, if not every day, watching my parking lot. Right, Mr. Preasey? I'm out there every single day. Sometimes I'm out there for an hour at a time. Thank you.
I don't believe that.
Thank you.
My name is Lauren Scarpa and I own Country Yarns at nine South Colony Street and Cindy's out there every day. And honestly, Mike, I know what you look like. I haven't, I've never seen you drive through the front of the parking lot. Maybe you have while I'm inside working, but.
How do you know what I drive?
All right, can we please keep it?
Seriously, this is.
I mean, I go out and I patrol the parking lot sometimes and I, we get sworn, people call us all kinds of names. I mean, we, we pay, I guess the end of the story is we pay rent there. So people from his building aren't paying rent to our landlord. So it's our private parking area. We just wanna be able to do business and not worry about other people that don't pay any, pay any rent in that parking lot to park there. I mean, if I go to one of the businesses uptown, I can't park in the police station, can I? If I can't find any parking, can I go to the police station and park?
I believe it can.
Really?
Public park.
Okay.
You can go to any public parking.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Do you have anything further to add? I'm not getting, I'm gonna, because I'm gonna close the public hearing. Anything further to add for your case?
Nope.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I'm gonna close the public hearing and open it up for discussion and possible action by the board. Mrs. Thott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions. I'm a little confused as to if there's a parking lot with the property that has approximately twenty spaces, why the spaces aren't just being used in the parking lot and why this is even necessary. I know we, we closed the, the public hearing, so I can't ask them that, but I mean, we don't have a map, I wish we had a map. Normally we get a map and I, so I don't know where the, the parking lot exactly is located, but I don't know why, why we're not just using the parking lot if there's a parking lot there. Or at least for some, even if there's other businesses that share that, why, you know, at least some of these aren't using the parking lot. And then as far as the, the actual variance, I'm just a little bit confused as to what we're even vote, I mean, I understand what we're voting on, but the type of variance on the application says non-conforming use and required by regulations is no expansion and then what they're asking for is to expand it. And so it says on the application to continue non-conforming use of indoor rec. So I guess my question's for staff. I mean, would, could this be a potential zone change? I guess is the reason for the variance because there's nothing in regards to this type of business stated anywhere? Is that why there's the need for the variance?
The variance is not a parking variance, first of all. So it, the parking is an aspect of it. It is a, a permitted use in the commercial zone. So she has a permitted use. She's not asking to do something in a zone that doesn't, so a zone change is not pertinent. What she's asking to do is more of it. There's limitations because the parcel is non-conforming. It does not have ample parking and whatnot for its tenants. And the, the, as was stated and absolutely correctly, any variances follow that land. It is not about an individual or a unit. So you have to think when that potentially that unit is vacated, that variance still holds. And there are, there were many with the wine company and with Ms. Blue, there were already limitations because of this non-conformity put on them individually, on the individual units as a result. So there, there was not something put on them later. Perhaps it's a place to grow and then we need to find alternate space. Perhaps not, but that's, it's a non-conforming parcel, but it is a. Perhaps not, but that's, it's a non-conforming parcel, but it is a permitted use there. There is no identified parking per se for an indoor recreation use. So we can't say you need five spaces, four spaces. That we cannot, it's not defined.
Okay. That makes more sense.
So it is, it's a use variance. Parking is a component of it. That's some of the discussion.
So now, because it carries with the property, would, if we were to approve and we said 15 spaces for Unit D and 15 clients, would that continue on to any sort of business that goes there, or would it just be?
The variance would be on that, yes. It's on the parcel. It is on 65 South Colony Road.
So we can't say 15 clients?
There is not that many spaces available. You need to consider what the impacts of increasing any use there and understand that there are numerous others there that also need that same parking. So we can't swap out. Somebody's not there, I have eight, because somebody might be there. So take it individually.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parisi?
You say that the variance follows the building. Now, if, and this is what if, if the, if this young lady left for whatever reason, and the landlord had a tenant that required a lot more room, can he, if the space is there, enlarge that area? And what happens to the variance?
Variance is on the land, not the people.
So no matter what the size of the building?
You need to take the whole parcel into account. That's why you can't take a piece away, and you can put limitations, you can grant or not grant, that would be your decision, but it's based on the parcel, not the business or not the individual unit. That could be divided into eight pieces tomorrow.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And the parcel has the variance on it for an allowable use, so that, everything you're granting on the parcel.
If there's one tenant for the whole building, this variance would carry?
That's correct.
Oh, geez. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is anybody else? Leave it up for, make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion. Somebody can certainly disagree and make a motion on the spaces if they'd like, but I don't know that a motion for the amount of spaces is in order, even though that's part of the proposal, because they seem to have found a solution to the parking issue by using other businesses' lots and the public parking. So I will make a motion to approve, I'm sorry, to expand the non-conforming use to 15 clients, where currently four clients are allowed.
Can we get a second?
Okay. This is a motion to approve the expanding of the non-conforming use. Mr. Parisi?
Mr. Chairman, can we discuss a motion? Normal parliamentary procedure is there's discussion of a motion before you vote on it.
The motion has been made and seconded, so not we would vote on it. So we can't discuss the motion. Normally, we don't.
Well, can I make a statement?
Go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, I think we have the wrong issue. I don't think you're the issue, young lady. You're right, you're caught in a crossfire. So, no, I don't need that. But you're the victim. The problem will not be fixed with the changing of this amount of where to park. I don't care what they do. It's not gonna change, because people are people. They wanna be as close to where they're going. They're going to another place, or to her place, or wherever. We are not gonna control it, because the town doesn't have the wherewithal to control that parking lot, plus, it's private property. So it falls on either the shop owner, who I wouldn't say is fair, and to the property owners, which they have their arguments, not fair either. So it's kind of a never-never land. While I sympathize, I know, while I sympathize, and I'm gonna support this, but I'm gonna support it because you are not the problem. You're coming in for a variance, which quite frankly, I don't think you need it, but whatever your reason, I hope it's honorable. If it's after I'm dead, I don't care. But while I'm alive, you better be telling the truth. So I wanted to clear that, and I also wanted to state, I am a member of the board of Wallingford Center Incorporated, but that letter had no influence on my decision. There were a couple of comments from the audience that have, well, and our rules, which are archaic, because you can't discuss a motion. It's ridiculous. Right, Peter? Thank you. So I'm supporting you, but it's not a vote against anybody else. You're not the issue, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, yes. Okay. Mr. Zerwinski?
Yes.
Ms. Todd?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Chair Rusak?
Well, I'm just gonna make a statement also. Mr. Parisi has changed my mind. I agree. She has worked hard towards getting the parking situation. She's not the problem. There are other problems there at that property. And I'm, yes, thank you. Your application has been approved.
Thank you.
Oh, no, good. That's moved you. Thank you.
Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the May 21st, 2018 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that we accept the special meeting on June 21st?
All in favor.
Mr. Chairman, I'll abstain, I was not present.
I wasn't either. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor.